I will call the meeting to order. And, uh, you'd like to forward your motion. Quick and pronounced here.
That's all right. Uh, sorry. Whatever you feel comfortable with.
I don't feel comfortable.
Okay. Uh, well, thank you, Mayor Smalling, and each of the members of the council tonight for letting me be here. I love that we are in a community where you can live in when we have opportunity for something like this. I will say, uh, my name is Logan Trowbridge. My last name is this answer. Like, actually, see, I'm a... My name is Logan Trowbridge, and I'm the pastor at Lakeside Church. And there, I get the opportunity each Wednesday night to be able to tell a little bit of good news to each of our youth. And I wanted to do that tonight as we get started and share a little bit, actually, what we talked about last night. We were sharing about the Easter story and still going through some of the events of the Easter story. And we came across a story in Matthew Chapter 20, said, and it talks about Jesus being brought captive with the governor and a man named Barabbas. And he is presented before a crowd of people, and the crowd is told to choose which one they want to let free. They get to choose Barabbas, or we get to choose Barabbas the criminal, or Jesus, the one called Messiah. And the crowd shouts to let Barabbas free. And instead, they shout for Jesus to be crucified. And Jesus takes the punishment for these guys. He takes the punishment that was meant for someone else. And it was what the crowd demanded. And I know, I'm saying it's good news, and it sounds like a sad story, but I think about how it applies to us today and what it looks like for our situation and for our lives. And it's that we have the opportunity to have that relationship with a God that's willing to do whatever it takes to remove those barriers and whatever it takes to keep us separated from Him. He's ready to get rid of any of those barriers and to give us that chance because He loves us in that way. I think that's an awesome thing, being able to go into any era of our life, knowing that the Creator of the universe and the One who made it all wants to have that relationship with us is just an awesome thing. And I just wanted to share that tonight. And I'm encouraged in everything that we go and everything that we're walking through in our city and our county. We've got that opportunity to walk alongside a God who cares about us enough for that. And that's awesome thing. So, I'd like to credit for the council tonight as we get started. God, we just thank you so much for all that you do. I thank you for allowing us to be able to have the freedom to have democracy and to be able to voice the things that are going on and to be able to have a government that is prepared to lead with men and women of integrity who are ready to take on the issues and to look at what's going on in our community and to be able to lead in that way. I ask that you give wisdom to each one tonight with Mayor Smalling and each one of the council members as these, as the, each note on the agenda is brought up, I ask that you just give wisdom, you give clarity, and you just give a piece as we walk through each of these and we move through as a community and we grow. And we just ask for your guidance in every step. And we thank you and we praise you and that you do this with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor is filling in for Keisha tonight. So, you call the vote, please.
Councilman Brown.
Here.
Calvert.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Wilkerson.
Here.
Mayor Smalling.
Here.
We have the vote. The next item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda. And Logan from UMC is here for a study. He talked with us extensively about his task orders for the proposal to do the study to expand the sewer plant. And it got left off the agenda, so if you entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. And I... Motion to add that onto the agenda? We have a... Motion to second adds UMC's task order for the wastewater treatment plant expansion study to the, uh, poll of favor. Say, uh... Motion carries. The agenda has been adopted. The next item on the agenda is the public comments for the agenda items tonight. I didn't put out a sign up sheet for public comments, but is there anyone here from the public that likes to comment on it related to agenda items tonight? The public comments, the next item on the agenda is the minutes for March 17, 2022 special call meeting.
Just may I make that motion that we approve the minutes from March 17, 2022 special call meeting?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the 317 special call minutes. Ms. Meredith, call the vote, please.
Calvert.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
The 317 minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is the 317, uh, 2022 city council minutes.
I have motion to approve both minutes.
I have a motion. No, second. I have a motion to second for the 317 regular city council meeting minutes. Ms. Meredith, call the vote, please.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Motion carries. The 317 minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is the April 7, 2022 special call meeting. All right, I have a motion.
I have motion approved.
Second.
Sorry, I was just saying special call meeting.
A second.
We have a motion to second for the April 7, 2022 special call meeting. Ms. Meredith, call the vote, please.
Councilman Lee.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
The April 7, 2022 minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is the March 22 financial statement. Keisha had spoken at the work study that she didn't be here tonight. If you think anybody had any questions, then you can reach out to her prior to this meeting. And I'm aware that no one has had any questions or nothing have been directed since she's seen out the package. So, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve March 2022 financial statement.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion to second to approve the March of 22 financial statement. Ms. Meredith, call the vote, please.
Councilman Wilkerson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
The March financial statement is approved. The next item on the agenda is ordinance 022022-1, and it is the, uh, second, this is this reading of the approval of policy procedure manual. Well, I get the moment, but we did this on the first reading already, and this will be the final reading, and it will be implemented after its passage. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, um, adopt the ordinance 022022-1 of the policy procedure manual.
I have a motion and a second to, uh, motion and a second to pass the ordinance approving the, on the second reading of policy procedures manual. Now, in the discussion, everyone understands we had put this off because Aaron had asked a question about the gratuity. And it is, I think it's in the notes, that it is stated that the gratuities are acceptable under the...
Ethics policy.
Ethics policy, yes.
Right. So... So, is this the second reading you said?
Yes. Everything that's in the policy will take effect after tonight. We've been kind of going back and forth between the two, comparing the two, taking, looking at all the circumstances and how they apply, or how they would apply differently as we've been going through this. So, it would be nice to have one set adopted, which, uh, before you make some decisions. Ms. Meredith, call the vote, please.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. The update on the policy procedure manual is approved. The next item is ordinance 032022-4, the creation of the Parks and Recreation Committee.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 032022-4 for Parks and Recreation Committee. Creating the Parks and Recreation Committee.
No, second motion.
We have a motion and a second for the ordinance to create the Parks and Recreation Committee. In the discussion portion, I would like to point out that Keisha provided a mini copy for everyone with some strike throughs of some of the discussion that we had at the work study. And I would like to ask Mr. Meredith, uh, the recommendation denied is revised from the first reading.
Someone just made a motion to amend, amending those changes.
To make the changes as written.
I think that's what they want to do.
I'm sorry, do I amend my original motion?
No, 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 but now that it's on the floor, now someone makes a motion to amend that ordinance to conform to what was passed out with the agenda.
It's true what was passed out, so you've got a lot to do.
If that's what you want me to ask up for the council, you may or may not want to make those changes. If you want to make a motion to amend...
I want to discuss a couple other changes we might want to make.
Okay. It's very difficult to do that.
The other two, it says the other two members will be appointed by the mayor.
Okay.
There hasn't been, uh, there hasn't been a motion to amend it yet. It really would be good if we hang back.
I have a motion to make some, to make some changes to amend this ordinance.
I'll say that.
We have a motion to second to amend the ordinance. Ms. Meredith, call the vote.
This is just for us. This is what the motion was for.
Okay. So, the two members that are appointed, we went back and forth. There's been discussion of a council member presiding on it and a council member not. Do we want to make it where it's a council member in addition to the five? Do, or do we want not to have a council member? Let's, let's have that. Because we're the ones that see the budget.
That's correct.
So, do we need a voice with them, like, not a voting member maybe, but a...
I think we need to have a non-voting member there.
That they can be appointed. This is what the council has.
We had an informal meeting with, not a full council meeting, but an informal meeting with interested parties prior to this meeting, and that was one of the questions that come up, a council member representative. We did speak to them potentially not being a voting member, but they would be there.
It's up to the council. You can, you can want one of your own as liaison, or as a voting member, whichever you prefer.
But we did talk about, as you stated in the ordinance, that they would rely on their little parts, the federal parts. But if we wanted to make that mandate, the member would participate.
And is this committee, y'all, y'all talk, this committee going to require a coach's background check, or are we going to do that?
Well, you know, we talked about that in a little bit at the work study, and, um...
So, the last time we were, we were all in this room, and you were here. If, I'm not mistaken, you said that it would be left up to that body to decide whether or not they wanted to have background checks mandatory.
Unless you want to pass the resolution requiring it for anyone that participates as a coach in the park, you can do that. You don't have, you're, you're giving them rulemaking authority, but you can also make rules. It's your part. This is a committee you're creating.
Would it be better if they, would it be better if they pushed forward that recommendation, or...
If you think they'll do it and you want it, that's fine, but if you're not sure, pass it yourself.
I think, I think this body, if it passes, that we know it's probably done.
If it is this body, you should make the rule.
I would amend Section 2, where it says that the board shall also promote such rules and regulations that may be appropriate with respect to administration of the parks, such approval of city council. I would just put right there, as one rule for the board, all coaches and assistant coaches participating in park activities shall be subject to background checks. We kept on file with whoever keeps it on file. Just make that, just put that as one rule that you're passing right here.
Does that need to be part of the amendment?
That's what you're doing.
But that's part of it. You can have as many amendments as you want. I'll be here all night.
So, you got a motion, okay.
Can you repeat that when you said John?
I never, I never read the order. It says, the county, so the committee or the board, the board shall require, this board shall require background checks for all coaches and assistant coaches participating in park activities. Period. It's part of the ordinance that way. It's not something that can be changed by the board, by the, by the Parks Board. This body, the council could change it.
So, going back to, do we want to decide the one, a council member? Do we decide we have a...
You need to vote on the background check first. You made that motion, did you? Did the background checks?
Did, did you make that motion?
I didn't make that motion, but I will, it's a amendment.
So, do we need to vote on that before we proceed to the other one?
Let's do that. It might be simple. You'll get that one out of the way.
Okay.
So, you're going to make that motion?
I'm going to make that motion.
We have a motion to amend the, uh, ordinance to add...
You're calling background checks.
I second.
The motion is second. We're voting on adding amendment, or we're voting on...
We're voting on the amendment.
Adding the sentence.
Adding the sentence.
Ms. Meredith?
Now, you call pro. We have to stop. We have a motion on the floor. You have a motion on the floor. I have an amendment. It will be a vote on. That's right.
Yes.
And that has to be taken care of before we can do this next one.
And she retract her amendment.
I haven't heard the motion. I just heard a motion to amend, but I didn't hear what the amendments were.
Correct.
You don't have a motion to amend. He's got the motion. I reject president, vote on Mr. Lee's motion. Then you go back to her.
So, the motion will be to amend it.
Listen, she, she made a motion to amend the ordinance. David Lee seconded it. And we were all discussing that and fixing to vote on that. He brought up the background checks. So, we need to dissolve first, first, and then move on to the background checks, or throw it all in one. I don't care what you do. All I know is there's a motion on the floor.
There's no point in voting on a motion to amend if you don't say what the amendment is. That's just a wasted effort. So, why don't you withdraw your motion to...
I withdraw my motion to amend.
We take your motion.
Take off.
Maybe we can get through this.
So, the workup used.
So, does any of this state its motion?
It may state it for him.
So, we've got several amendments to vote on before...
The board shall require background checks for all coaches and assistant coaches participating in more games. Period.
Okay. We have a motion...
I want you to get that there.
To amend.
And you're going to second that motion, right?
You are.
I didn't second.
Okay. All right.
We have a motion and a second. Okay. Ms. Meredith? Okay, is there any discussion of this amendment? I did want to say, we're going to handle the other amendments that are struck through. Are it a separate motion, or is it one...
Yeah, we're going to do this one.
Which is now.
I didn't know it was a separate one they want to make. We just got to go through it.
Okay. So, there's a discussion on the, Ms. Meredith, call the vote.
It's about power for the coach.
Calvert.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries on the amendment to the ordinance. I'll entertain a motion for the additional amendments, uh, uh, on the draft of the ordinance for...
So, can I make a motion? Just so we can go ahead and get this portion taken care of.
Do you want to make a motion, do just what's in there you can.
I make a motion that we do just what's in there.
You substitute Section 1, and the document handed out for Section 1 to pass on first reading. That's what you do.
That's what I'm going. That's what my motion says.
Okay. You got that, Tom?
I'm in the motion.
Was that a second for me?
No.
Okay. I second the motion that we replace what is in the passed out document here for Section 1 for the one that was in the original.
There you go.
There you go. Good job, Henry.
Go ahead and discuss.
Yes.
Okay. I come back to, that Section 1 states two members. Are we adding a council member? That's my question.
Can we change that after this ordinance is...
You can amend this. It's just going to take a two reading of ordinance to amend it once you pass it. So, it's good if you, if you know you want to change it, instead of going to pass the change on second reading, just somewhere than having to go through this whole processing again.
This is going to sound really, really confusing. Can I amend my amendment?
Just withdraw your amendment.
Withdraw my amendment.
Take another one.
Discussion. Discussion.
She withdraws her second, I'm sure.
Yes, I was drawing my second, but I want to discuss it. It can do something to discuss.
How do we do what we're wanting to do here with adding it?
Nobody knows what you want to do.
Council member representative.
I don't know what to do.
Make a motion to amend Section 1 by adding that to require a council member to serve as a liaison with this board.
I make a motion to amend Section 1 to add a council member to serve as liaison as a member of this board, not voting member.
Not voting member of the Parks Board. There you go.
I second it.
Thank you.
But that is in addition to the changes that are on paper, correct?
In addition to the changes that are on the paper.
I second that.
Okay. Now, we're at the, we have a motion and a second for that amendment. Ms. Meredith?
Any discussion?
Mr. Gomis.
Do we want this stuff?
We're at the discussion.
I think, I think it's pretty subspace for you to be a non-voting member with a councilor.
Okay. Just making sure everybody's good with the changes.
Down, I think, no, maybe.
Motion is...
Do we need to vote on the amendment?
That's what I said, we're not there yet. Okay.
Ready?
Yes.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Motion for the, to amend the ordinance has passed. Now, with no other amendments to be presented, I will, uh, entertain a motion to approve ordinance 032022.
The motion's already been made.
So, we're already there. You're just ready for a vote.
So, ready for a vote.
On the ordinance is amended, you're ready for a vote.
Okay. We're ready for a vote.
Okay. I will, we're in the discussion portion of the original ordinance. David, you weren't here, and Doug, you weren't here, but, no, I had scheduled an informal meeting with the people that were interested in moving over what, as a group, that I felt would be some of the requirements of the committee, other than just set the rules. We're going to look at some grant opportunities and some things. And there's a, the State Department of Recreation stuff has recently restarted their grant cycle. And I have a two-year period to explore a park nature plan process. David will identify what the project will be. And I explained to those people that are interested in the committee that they would be doing it blindly. There's a whole process. I've got a hundred-page document here about that process and how it goes. It's not just, you know, they wouldn't be just in charge of trying to decide how we want to develop a soccer field. We have to look at, if there's enough soccer fields, if we have to, if we need our growth plans and things like that. And all of those things will be answered and put in place to allow us to successfully run that cycle in two years when the money came out. And we talked about that in detail at the meeting, so that would, that would be a huge role in what they were doing beyond just setting the rules, but as you quote, what would the council then recommend actions as it says in the ordinance. And then we also talked about, I just had a strong desire to create a facility that had an equal football field and an equal soccer field beyond just baseball lines. That's probably what this committee would look like. So, that, that's basically what we talked about. And they asked a lot of questions and a lot of good ideas, and that's why the amendment to have a council member on there, so they would know what they had available to them, resources that they could partake with would be easier than to come forward with a body with a representative. So, we thought it was great, and a lot of progress was made, and we talked about how we attempted this a couple of times through this ordinance. We took a lot of steps to prevent things that were prohibitive to the committee moving forward previously. So, we're, we're in good shape. So, if I have any more discussion about the park rules...
Call the question.
One quick thing, I will say, um, we're going to allow them to go back to their boards and lift formal recommendations of who their representatives need to be, and just collectively bring those to City Hall or to the attention, and we will come back at another meeting of the council to approve those.
You're asking a question one more time.
Yeah. I was saying, we will, we're not approved at night. We will do that.
Not one more time.
Okay. Ms. Meredith?
Yes.
Call the vote.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries. Before we get into the new business, we ran the agenda to add Logan to the agenda. I would like him to come and talk about his task order.
Who is it?
You. I didn't ask you. I brought copies of the draft that you... Can you pass this to Ms. Meredith, since you had it? This is an updated copy that, that he talked about amending this a little bit at the work study. So, and he provided this to me yesterday. I knew y'all didn't have it ahead of time, but very similar and all that info.
Sure. If you might want a cover copy, you're welcome to do it.
So, this is a revised version of the task order we reviewed at the work study session two weeks ago. So, this is the final draft. Since we last met on the work study session, I reviewed this initially, made some revisions based on some ideas we thought you guys could put on, that the city could enjoy yourselves and wouldn't be necessary. Typically, I drafted the original or anything that would need to be included in the schedule of work. The, talking with the mayor, he and I worked to whip this down a little bit, so we cut out about $100,000. And that is, what that involved was, uh, we were the assumptions, the script assumes that the city would provide same form data. Originally, I had us performing the same work ourselves, which we're capable of, capable of doing if we need that. And that was...
Get that.
I also reviewed this with Angela Jones, except for her, and I compared it with TX Godmore, and just make sure this is, kind of, everybody in the state is asking for it early in the work. So, that's a check as well. I really have, this really is, this is what we reviewed. This is the first step, first phase of implementing an expansion period. Anything else that you guys had in mind? Those are the few things that I wanted to mention that I know we talked about last time, revisions that I said I was going to mention. Is there any questions on that?
I will make a motion to pass this task order for expansion study, so that we can talk about it.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to pass UMC's test group for the wastewater treatment plant, Phase 1 of the expansion study.
One thing I do want to...
Hold on.
Sure.
I don't know how to put a rating for this.
Okay. I'm sorry. I just want to make sure this is clear, and, and this is really a matter of, when we discuss schedule, and you guys have some expectation based on, we provided an opinion letter on, the assessment of the plan, you have an opinion on the capacity of the plan to serve over, and in that, we provided an estimated schedule on what it would take to, the phases, how many months each phase to implement a new plant. And we saw that to, out to around 2025. I hope that was clear in the way that we expressed that, that is very estimated or approximated schedule. I'm allowing one more time in this task order, in this study phase than what we initially allowed in that opinion letter. So, just want to make sure that that is clear. This, frankly, in the time that it's taken, since then, that opinion letter had an estimated date of starting up a new plant, but I was assuming that you would need it again in some of those phases. So, I can tell you now, it will be April 25, that that happens. That was... That was, I guess, your ballpark estimate, not so much as the calendar it's gonna happen.
This task order here is necessary to do the expansion on the plant that we're all building right now, right?
We started with.
This task order here is, this is necessary, it's gotta be done so we can expand.
That's right.
The capacity of the one that's being built right now.
That's right.
Now, why, why can't we expand on the tank, on the one that's being built right now without this?
The state would allow. That's what I started with, I'm interjecting, that this process allows us to do a review of the requirement for today, to look at the different alternatives beyond the expansion. And allow them to provide questions to us that we'll ultimately have to answer the questions.
And critically, if I'm wrong, but the way that's, if I'm not mistaken, the way that the state was saying is the current plan that's being built right now is approved as is.
Correct.
Essentially, anything that deviated with that would essentially be a new plan and we'd have to start it all over again.
Outside of the minor details, major changes in the schedule design are not.
Because I really, it would actually hurt us if we tried to force that because it would actually probably stop what we're already doing, which is not.
Yeah.
Productive.
So not only would the state not allow it, even if the state had no issue with it, we would recommend it before without this kind of investigation, putting together a report. Is identified as the best route we're having to, whether it's to expand, expansion in the way this project is defined is potentially adding on to the existing plant. It could be, it could be that alternative, or it could be adding a completely separate plant at a different location. And it takes this level of effort to be able to identify what's the most cost-effective, um, initial option.
And the state would be very instrumental in that, like you said, because expansion is a broad term in this, in this scope. Because it could be a whole other plant at a whole other location, at a whole other stream.
Right, that's what the purpose is. Will the state work, code with you guys on the evaluation part of the existing conditions of the, of the current plan now?
They will give feedback.
Okay. So they'll, they'll give a green light or a red light, depending on what they, and this task order will allow that conversation to happen with G N C and the state, correct? No, no other, no other, um, things are needed from us. I mean, you, the ball will be in your court, basically, to have the communication with the state to determine whether or not the existing plant could benefit us down the line in some capacity. Or expand the capacity in some way, right? Okay.
That's right. And it's informal discussion, they can't give a formal protocol of anything that we discuss. But they can tell us what to include or not include in the report that we, at the end of this phase. So if anything, if we were to say, hey, here's this alternative we're considering.
Right.
To put a plant here, have this size, discharge to this stream, they could say, that's not gonna work because of this reason. And for that reason, we would not include it in the report as an alternative.
So let me get a little deeper, that would require the state, this task order could open the door for the state to come in and inspect the current wastewater treatment plant under this, under this task order, correct? And it could open that door in some way, right? Without us having to have a, another, well, we don't need the state's permission to come in any time. But I mean, this would get the ball rolling on that, right? I'm just trying to add a little deeper in the details because I do want this task order to complete all those alternatives and to figure out what we want to do in the future. And I know that that's a big part of our conversation about looking at the current conditions we currently have. See if those are in addition to what we're already, are building, could possibly alleviate capacity issues. So I just wanna make sure before I vote on this.
Section two point two point four is a very vital part of the equation. Develop population protection based on the current and future development to establish design capacity for the future plant. And you spoke on inspections.
Right.
Two deep inspections are already in place and something that we already occurred that are not necessarily part of this process. But if there's an infraction, would you very well know that you can pass, know that it's a counter?
The state doesn't know that we're looking at, and again, I know I'm probably overlooked and analyzing this, I apologize. The state doesn't currently care what we're dealing with this way, what the old wastewater, the current wastewater treatment plant. Until we start the conversation, until our engineer begins the conversation and says, hey, what about this? So I just wanna make sure that that is part of the, the communication with the state.
Yeah.
And I hear, I hear you're pretty confident in that, okay?
Yeah, and you may have seen, I had, there's one thing that I had shaken off and probably more so, I don't expect that the state would be granted to inspect any facilities, I mean, if they can.
Right.
Um, I don't see that as a necessary part of this phase.
Okay.
We, we had a teleconference with all the people involved in our current permitting process, which allows us to release into the stream. And the people on the teleconference were very encouraging that we had done everything that we had agreed to do to this point, to allow such a thing. And we've, and as you all know, we've gone through very measures to do and to do what the state has asked us to do. And if, if we had not done those things, collectively, they wouldn't have opened any of this and I felt like they would have told us, so. But they were very, and there have been other documents and there have been inspections that do speak about the releasing into the streams and stuff like that, that it is at unacceptable levels. And that the new plant may actually be at the maximum portion of that. And that, and the, and their request for this proposal, the alternatives, you know, they're going to be very highly a part of what they're going to allow. But they're not gonna come and knock on our door and say, no, you can't do this, absolutely. We will present everything we can to them, make it efficient. And they're on board with us at this point to allow it. But I wanna add something else to this. This proposal for the expansion is, is the proposal for the expansion that will allow us to seek for the funding for this type of project. They're two completely separate parts of the project. So we can't imply the two or do one toward the other. Because that, that could be confusing to everyone.
You're saying in order to apply more money for something like this, something like this has to already be in motion.
Yes.
And as you said.
Yes, they're two separate departments.
That's really the third major reason that this is necessary. The first was the state requires it, second is you want it because you wanna make sure it seems cost-effective and best option. And thirdly, the, the, any funding source that you go to can acquire, that you provide a document like this report to show an engineer has thought through the options and says that this is economical and efficient.
When we first started talking about this, I thought this was so that the, when the plant was completed, that phase one would be ready to get on board of the plastic road road project. Is that right?
Yeah, that's right. Of the existing plant.
Correct.
The, the phase one, at the time we looked at the, the existing, the plant that is under construction now could take phase one without any additional expansion. Is it, is phases two and continue after that, a part of the, and any others that would need an additional expansion?
Okay, this, when we say existing, we thought that's a new plant.
Yeah.
Can it be expanded? Is it without building a brand-new plant?
It can, and that would be part of what we were just gonna do.
I think what you said before, I think theoretically it can, but I think that.
It's a matter of T D X limiting how long.
Yeah, sure. Whether or not.
Right, T D X will allow the expansion.
It may be a different thing.
And that's beyond find, discovering if we have the financial ability to do so.
Well, I, I feel like we're taking this thirty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars over that crap label.
I mean, why, why wouldn't it make more sense just to submit a formal request to T D X and ask them, can we discharge more into this stream? Instead of spending all these thousands of dollars to get that answer?
That's, they're requiring, I'll, I'll speak for it.
Sure.
They're requiring us to explore these alternatives as part of the process.
So we can't just call T D X and say, is there a way we can discharge more into this stream? I mean, it, it's not. So we can't just, we can't just ask them, can we discharge more in there? Not, not a matter of if our, if our plant will handle it, because we've got two plants over here. We will, we will have two plants over here. Why can't we just submit a request to T D X saying, can we discharge more into this stream? I understand that a portion of that old plant is in disarray and needs to be torn down. But another half of it over there could still keep going because it's only about twenty years old, or thirty years old.
I always had the impression that part of the construction was the entire thing being torn down. It's being taken out.
The, the casino leader speaks to our ability to eliminate the older plant in its entirety.
Okay.
There will be, there will be.
We can't keep any piece of it?
No. There's a very short list of equipment pumps, et cetera, that would be salvaged, that would be commissioned, forty miles.
So it's not, it's not an alternative, in other words.
So we can't use that.
To do that is not, probably not on the table.
Well, then why aren't we evaluating existing conditions if we can't use that?
That's, that's a pretty good term.
We talked about that today, as my question, he has took some of that other proposal you didn't speak about.
Yeah, existing conditions are, is not just the plant, it is the flow you're seeing, existing conditions of, um, what's more relevant. Yeah. And where you could put a plant, it's, it's analysis of, um, or analyze the options that you have existing.
There were some items in his original proposal that would reveal a lot of the construction of the current plant to evaluate for its readiness to be expanded. And as it's, it's on here and it speaks about that, it's assuming that those things are accurate as they are in design.
What would it cost me to go through G N C to get you to submit a request to T D X to say, what is the maximum output that we can discharge into the stream after building the appropriate facilities to treat our wastewater?
After building?
A, after building, what, what, what would it cost me to ask you to submit a request to T D X asking that? I mean, I understand right here, you're telling me I can get it for, for thirty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars if I have you do all this other stuff. But if I just want you to submit a request, asking that question, what is the maximum amount that you will allow me to discharge this, what's that gonna cost?
I.
Because that's the question I want answered right now.
To answer the question, what would it cost, I don't think it makes sense to say, because I'm frankly, to, to send something to the state to ask for additional discharge from a plant that isn't rated for that. They would usually say, is anything over one three M G B, it's not a real one. If we're talking about, we've already made upgrades, this expansion would be part of getting increased permit to do that. It, it would be, I mean, I could give you a cost for really anything, any, any scope you guys said you were willing to, but I wouldn't recommend asking that question. Because I can tell you that it wouldn't be there, it's not necessary to discuss really because they would say the capacity of the plant needs to be more before we can discharge more.
Well, obviously, but if we were to build this plant, again, hypothetically speaking, if we were to build this plant, you, you can't just go to them and say, if we had this, would this be allowed?
If you have.
If we had another plant just like this one, would it be allowed? That's, I mean, would that be not a sufficient question to ask them to get approval and then be able to give you some sort of answer?
Yeah, I mean, we can give them, so you're talking about to propose to the state, can we, if we had a.
You need every bit of what's in here in order to get the state to give you that answer is what I'm asking.
Part of, so, there, and this is just, because this is the conversation. This, the conversation we had with the state originally to talk through, hey, we're interested in, the, the city is interested in an expansion towards my capacity. One of the things that the state stated would be required, which is very common in studies like this, would be a wasteload allocation or a discharge analysis to determine if a little tramel can accept additional discharge of what is.
Because here's my fear, is that we spend thousands of dollars with you for this study and you say, well, the best place to put a wastewater treatment plant is over here in this corner of the city. But the state will never approve it because of some random muscle that won't allow you to do that.
Yeah.
Uh, or crustacean, but.
Well, I think he already spoke, he's not gonna recommend anything that the state will allow and, and that, so.
So the state has engineers that are trained in the same ways that we are. So the things that we, the way we design it, the way that they check the design point, the same principles, the same, same degree of engineering. So when we, when we submit something that's going to be by the same standards that they are gonna check it by and we can be confident that's generally is going to be accepted. Probably because we're having a discussion along the way about, hey, this is what we are submitting. I, I will say it's, um, this is, this is not just a way to go about getting additional wastewater capacity, this is, this is the way.
I just wanna make sure we're not spending money that we don't.
Absolutely.
I wanna, I wanna add.
Always here for conversations like that.
I wanna add one more thing to that. What, what you ask for is a logical question.
Absolutely.
But this study also can make sure that this plant and its expansion is suitable for fifty years of our growth. And if you, if you shoot a number out there and say, we want to know what it's gonna be to provide this number of this amount of discharge, we're certainly gonna miss that one, like, like we have previously. So it's a, it's a potential shortcut that we would regret.
And I think, I think the rest of the question is, is there any, any way to do this other than a step like this? Is there, is there something, because that's how you, frankly, than not going down the wrong path, just to take a step instead of ten. And this probably feels like ten steps, but this, this is the step that will get us to identify alternatives, identify the costs associated with each of those and submit it to the state. At the end of the day, it is up to the state to say this or not. And there are scenarios where our team has submitted with the municipality has submitted P E R and say, it's, this, this is unacceptable. But it's not usually just reject it, it is, let's make these changes. So that conversation would start once this is submitted. But the thing the conversation about, can we ask for, uh, can we just add some additional discharge to this string? Would take analysis on that string and on the wasteload that there's no way to do with this report.
Okay.
We do have a lot of feedback from the state that exist on quarterly reports and things that they've done. And talk about those infractions and those discharges and what's allowed and what's not allowed and how we're either making the limits or not making the limits. I can get you some of that information, but that'll kind of answer your question outside, that's the stuff that they're gonna compile and look at to give this answer. But it's, it's very detailed, uh, stuff that I don't think you're qualified to look at, but it answers those questions in great detail.
I'm doing a golf question, right?
Okay. No more discussion about this proposal. Refresh my memory on who made the motions. You made the motion and you seconded. And we have a motion and a second to, uh, to the task order for the wastewater treatment plant expansion. Ms. Barrett, call your own.
Okay, Councilman Wilkerson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion passed.
There, I'm, I'm gonna need to talk about, uh, okay, I'm gonna, so just to discuss the point here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for coming up.
Thank you, loving. The first item under new business is the drainage proposal for David Harrison. Everyone, Mr. David did a proposal at the work study. I have discussed the proposal with Mr. Bradley. And if y'all entertain a, I entertain a motion to approve Mr. Harrison's, uh, proposal to fix his drainage and, uh, as we discussed, his, uh, proposal did not include the city doing the work in Mr. Harrison, Mr. Calvert's paper of materials. But he did agree at the meeting that if we did that, he would sign a liability in papers and materials. And you can speak to that if you'd like a little further.
It's just a reason, you know, I stood with Aaron to do an agreement, just hold this harmless agreement liability.
If you want to do it, we can draft those agreements. They don't have to be done. So we can get materials cost and we can do the liability agreement after you guys approve it.
For the council's notification, can you read exactly what the proposal is so that we know what?
Can we just be motioned or not motioned? Can we get a, I think we need to get a motion first. We need a motion before we discuss. If I don't get a motion, we, uh, the proposal, the drainage, um, position that Mr. Harrison's in?
Second.
A motion second to approve Mr. Harrison's proposal. And let's talk about it.
Okay, so we're talking about option three, that was discussed the same again.
Option one and two were-
And some lot of stuff that the city would do to work.
That's correct. Option one or two are combinations of option number three. But are you still in agreement, David? Do you, you got it to pay for the material?
So we pay for the rock and the under, and the underlay.
Okay, and we provide the labor and you'll sign the whole harmless agreement? And that, that's what you guys are agreeing to do?
Yes.
And, uh, we will draft that, uh, agreement to show the cost of the material and, uh, draft the whole harmless agreement for him to sign if y'all choose to do this. Any, any more discussion? Do I have any more questions?
So we're just staying on y'all's land or we'll have to get off on church's land?
Uh, I'm not sure how far you look. Talked to them about going up.
I believe-
I think we can stay on our own land. It'll be all right.
I believe on y'all's side.
Get them flat on the top of there.
I believe we would have to-
I think we should be able to stay on our land entirely. The top of my land levels off before it gets to the church's land. I think we can stay in that area, in that corner of, of our land. Aaron, his, his diagram that he divided at the work study, is that the, the way that the city engineer looked at the, at the possibility of doing the project?
Yes. Aaron, Aaron knows which side of, there's a utility pole that separates our properties. And Aaron said he wanted it to go on particular one side, stay away from a water meter and some water lines. So Aaron knows, that's why I wanted, that's why I was so hopeful y'all would do this instead of us just hiring someone that would end up making a mess out of something that we would be responsible for then. But Aaron knows which way it needs to get, so.
Now, I do have a question there about, and I don't think I've talked to you about this, but are we looking at relocating that power pole or going to the side of it?
It's going to go to the side of it.
For most of the scope of work will actually be on your property.
Coming down the hill there.
Very small.
Just to be clear, it does not follow the property line to the church?
No, it, no, it's not, no.
But like I said, the engineer looked at it, Aaron looked at it and knows exactly what it needs to be. And it's, it's, and also we want this water to wind up where it needs to be instead of calling this problem to be someone else's problem. So in my view, that that's why I think it's important that our people have their data, have their, and then it can be done. Not that they couldn't have, though, like I said, or how likely that they would do it with, I think, uh, we still have problems.
Yeah, we, we didn't want to fix our problem either and create a problem for someone else.
Correct.
So that's raising me and Aaron was looking at it and this way the water flows and where the culverts already at.
Aaron, did you do a cost estimate on the material for this?
I have not, no sir. And the biggest reason why is because that's subject to change by the time we can get to do it.
Well, that's where the, this conversation is, you know, you can approve it provided that it doesn't cost like two thousand dollars or exceed five thousand dollars or whatever. And I think that's important to talk about because if you agree to do the deal, no matter what it costs, we would be now approved again.
Labor wise, uh, and machinery is what the city would be providing if they were furnishing the rock and the, uh, we'll, we'll haul the rock and, and all that, uh, because I understand they, you know, don't have a way to do that. But, um, it's my understanding that they would furnish or reimburse the city for the rock and, uh, the underlay. Is that correct?
Yes. Okay, well, for, for their benefit, this would certainly be one load of, right? I mean, do you, and-
Uh, it's more than likely going to be about two.
And, and, and your experience purchasing this rock, what has that cost in the past?
Um, probably looking at somewhere around for two little shot, you're probably looking somewhere around twelve hundred. I'm, I'm guessing right around the night.
Is that, is that understandable that it's that kind of cost to you guys? I mean, if it was like, like I said, if it was five or ten thousand dollars, you'd be like, well, dude, I know you're incurring quite a big cost. What you're having to do with-
Well, that's, that's big ten, a hundred thousand dollars.
That's what I'm saying, but, you know, we don't have to be tired, you know? If it was very expensive, they may say, hey, we don't, we don't want that big, so, you know.
Welding's not bad at all, is it?
No, no.
So basically what we're doing is the option number one he provided is, if y'all, you got that?
Yeah.
That we provide the, the equipment and labor to do this and we provide all of the materials.
But option number one doesn't speak to that they're going to have the cost of it.
Yeah, we had created option three at work study.
Yes.
Well, I'm going to withdraw my motion and make another one. So if I withdraw the second.
Thank you.
So I'm going to make a motion that we, um, uh, do this drainage ditch. The city provide the equipment and labor. Mr. Harrison, Mr. Calvert provide all the materials.
Have a motion?
I'll second.
And second to, uh-
I withdrew the original motion.
Oh.
I withdrew it.
David, I wrote that one down. I do, you should have corrected me.
No, it's okay. We're good, we're good. We're in order now.
So, okay, we have a motion and a second to, to do the drainage proposal provided they will pay it, pay for the material cost and sign a waiver of the judicial liability. Ms. Meredith, call roll. We have no further discussion.
Do we have a second on that?
I already said it.
All right, we're ready.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a timeframe again, Aaron, of when you might do this project?
Uh, two, three weeks, um, depending on weather, cold.
Yeah.
But I would agree within, within three weeks of finishing it.
So we'll really get the cost and we'll likely have to get that.
Yep. Contact me and I'll pass it on to Green and Lisa. We appreciate this. Right, thank y'all, thank y'all, thank y'all. I'm going to excuse myself. My wife's at home with three grandkids.
I'd say he.
So, yeah, the next item on the agenda is the, uh, standard specifications for developers.
I have provided an update of this for you, everyone. As a group, we have talked about this a lot. But, um, this is something that is in response to the consent order that will be required for the sustainability portion of the new plant and how we, uh, go forward. Mr. Bradley has reviewed the proposal. There's a couple of things that have changed since, uh, Brian Griffith wrote his proposal. The first thing is his proposal was written over a year ago. And at that time, you know, not a whole lot was going on. He had a thirty day proposal to write to, to write this work up. And in his draft that everyone has in their hands right now, he's proposing it be a hundred and twenty days. And that, that, that had changed since his original presentation. And when I, Mr. Bradley reviewed this proposal on, on page four and I struck through for everyone, uh, the indemnity, I can't pronounce the word, indemnity, uh, clause, uh, is struck through and, um, if, if you guys would like to approve this, I will reach out to him to see if that's acceptable or I will not sign the contract. Mr. Bradley, and I spoke about it, it should not be a problem for us to approve it without that. And he shouldn't have a problem removing it. But I certainly will not approve it with the indemnity clause in the contract. But, uh, he spoke about these things in detail at the work study. If anybody had any questions, this, uh, is a proposal that is nine thousand six hundred and forty dollars. And a big portion of what he is asking for here is spoke to that we will implement these, uh, this product into the respond, it's into consent order. That's, uh, so, you know, because we, we have two of these and this one is the more complex of the two. The other one is in bullet points about what is provided.
I'm going to make a motion, pass this standard specifications on developers.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
Motion and second to pass the standard specifications. Are there any, does anybody have any questions? I know this one is very, uh, got a lot of terms and a lot of legal stuff in it.
And since we haven't done this before, we don't have to amend it even though you've looked at it and, and made some changes to it.
It was your approval, it was your got.
Yes, we, um, this is a proposal for him to provide the information for the, I know it seems silly for the standard specifications. But, uh, our, um, the consent order speaks to putting these things in place. And there are a lot of, uh, benefits to having this in place as we move forward and we grow. And it seems silly because I am not able to speak to exactly the technical specifications related to the water distribution, uh, up to Troy Beaches in Niagara. And those are very important things. Does anybody have any questions about this? Ms. Meredith, call the roll please.
Uh, Councilman Calvert?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries. I will reach out to him about the contract. This next one will be easier. This is the developer, uh, policy. It's the same thing. It had the indemnity clause and originally had thirty days to prepare because of the timeframe. I will say he stuck to the, uh, proposed price from a year ago that he needed more time to complete the project. And, uh, like I said, this one's a little easier to decipher because it's got some bullet points on page one about what he's going to provide for us, uh, that are required as well. So I entertain a motion for, um, the developer's policy.
I make a motion and we pass the developer's policy?
I say.
A motion and a second to pass the developer's policy. Does anybody have any questions? Uh, on page one of the policy, which is actually the third page of the, uh, letter bullet points are very specific items. And we benefit from these because we don't currently have any of these officially in place. And an example that I can speak to is that when a developer, uh, will require services from the city for water or sewer, I currently draft a, they draft a letter and they provide it to me. And I reach back after an engineer and he will look at their request and provide an individual cost of providing the answer for the capacity of the water and sewer. And without a document like this in place, we, we don't necessarily have a mechanism to, uh, hard to develop before the cost of doing the, the waste. And that's just one of the things that this will answer. But if these letter bullet points are, are very vital, I feel like as we grow, we will apply the things that we don't even cover up that they will apply to the future. And they are very minimal. I think the costs that he is recommending to do both of these proposals is something that we will recoup in a very short period of time. And it will save the office staff, it will save the engineering services and it'll save Aaron some trouble because there are very specific things that the developer will have to do. And I want to go back, I want to backtrack to the other document because they sound like they're very same thing. The developer's policy is just how the forms and things that we put in place to provide them. And the standard specifications are how they will actually provide these things to us. It will be how they build their system, what we require that may be very different from what another utility will require or might be far beyond the minimum, but it makes our, and that's how we are going to have it. Does anybody have any questions? I mean, this one looks a little easier to decipher than the other one, but, uh-
Call the question, Brian.
Okay. Ms. Meredith, call the roll.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Wilkerson? Yes. Calvert?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries. Like I said, I'll reach out to him about the indemnity clause. We will revisit that if he's not willing to remove it from the contract. The next item on the agenda is the, uh, water and sewer services contract. This, I'll entertain a motion to approve the water and sewer services contract for giving discussion. I wish to agree with the water and sewer services contract. Okay, we have a motion?
I'll second the motion. Let's see what this is.
We have a motion and a second to approve the water services contract. Again, Pete Hope Davis presented this proposal. This is the standard proposal that, and then we'll talk together. Cassage Friends has this, Portland has this and it's almost worth a way of the same contract. But it will provide, as we spoke about, the tenant fees. It allows documentation that you will put in your writing that if they don't build our specifications and they don't meet our requirements, we are not obligated to provide them with the services. the services. And the fees that we are incurring with the cost of development that are mostly unknown because we don't, we've not done this a lot, but this is the legal document that will allow us to, you know, peg actions of development that's not done in the works to handle.
So that's really similar for us?
This is, like, the tap fees, whatever they may be, will be written into the contract, and it will be, the water services contract will be either the sewer, or the water, or both individually, and it'll cover those type of things.
Did he mention this in the work study?
Did we have a copy of this?
We don't have a copy of that.
We sure didn't get a copy of that in the little packet. I don't feel comfortable putting them in something that's weird.
He provided this at the work study, as far as I am concerned. You didn't get this in the package.
We sure didn't, because everyone already had it.
I'm pretty certain I passed it out. I can, we'll type this.
Mr. Bradley, did it come yet?
No, Brian Griffith.
Right here on the agenda notes, it says that he emailed the documents from Bradley for it.
Yes, but that's what, yeah. They don't have it.
Have you reviewed it?
Well, looked at it. It's very rough. It's not, it's got a lot of blanks, and it's really not tailored to Westmore. So it's, there's a template, I think it's some, talks about all around a district, so I assume it's some utility district that uses it. It's got a lot of blanks and a lot of things that would probably require you much discussion about percentages of development costs that are paying various things.
Can I make a motion to defer this until I can see a final draft of a contract that's tailored to Westmore? That doesn't have all this, this wood notes and...
We have a motion already on the table, but unless they want to withdraw, we vote on it, you can then, or you can then table a discussion.
I think when the motion is deferred, that takes precedence over all of the motions if it's got a second.
A second.
Second.
We're going to talk about this more.
You need to vote.
Yeah, we gotta vote.
Gotta vote on whether or not you defer it.
Ms. Meredith, call the room.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
I'll get into, give some attempts maybe to be more specific, or there's not so much, some of the blanks on the document. But also, the tap fees and stuff like that do need to be specific to us, I suppose.
The parent suggested you try to get that prepared before the next agenda goes out. Then you go and they can review it before the meeting and see what's in it, and then it'll be debated at the next meeting.
And this next item, which is what I proposed last time, go ahead and raise, raise the tap fee for water and tap fee for sewer, and I will make that motion to raise the water tap fees by $500 and sewer tap fees by $1,000 at the present.
We have a motion to, for the next item, which is the tap fee increase. This is just something I wanted to provide to everybody out there. The tap fee increase may or may not be in my item, but everybody else is. And you can see from this document provided from M-PAS, that the fees are all over the place, but they're very specific to these communities for whatever their purposes are. And this document of this snapshot was done in 2020. And Aaron and I talked today that a lot of the costs have certainly increased since that time. So the proposed increases to the tap fee are, I don't know, are out of line with our cost because this one's, this study showed from two years ago.
Okay, to refresh my memory, what is our current fee?
I have this.
You said increase, about increase.
The inside-of-the-city limits is $1,500 currently.
Is that water or sewer?
Water tap. And we're going, with $500, it'll be $2,000. And outside-of-the-city limits is currently $3,000, and it will increase it to $3,500. Sewer tap fees are, a new tap is $1,200, increasing it to $1,700. And that is, of course, that's inside of the city.
Sewer was going $1,000, so you could...
Yep, $1,000. So...
$4,200.
$2,200. So this is a typo in this, in the thing I have. But also, on this, we have what is considered to be an inspection fee on the books, and the inspection fee is currently $15. That's not even covering our budget for this asset. And Aaron and I talked about that a little bit today. He had a recommendation about that inspection fee should be, you spoke to him, that should be a minimum of $45?
In my opinion, yes, sir.
So it might be that part of the tap, it's the inspection fee. So, you know, I don't think you, if you're going, because that's not increasing everything by $500.
Well, I have, the inspection fee, I added $45 to that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to increase the inspection fees to $45, and the other water sewer tap fees by $500 and $1,000.
There has been established an ordinance resolution, because you can't just amend an ordinance by motion.
This current proposal, when we looked it up, there was a dumb number. We've had it on the books in both forms.
What we might want to do is put this in the form of an ordinance, give it an effective date of June 1st, get something in front of you, we got it where everybody knows in advance, where it doesn't just make it pass tonight, is that what it's going to be tomorrow? I mean, I don't, you know, normally you give some lead times to let people know what to do and what the fee would be. We could get it before June, we could pass it on first reading at the May meeting, or you could have a special reading at, you could have a special session at your student session in May. Or you could pass it in May and start at June 1st. That might be better to get it sooner rather than later.
I'll put that in full of a motion, if you vote the next motion or ordinance number, I'll put it in full of ordinance.
Need to add five, right?
I can't figure that system at all. I go one, two, three, four, five.
Whatever it is, we just want to go put on.
Where's the next number, I said, what we'll put on?
And be the next agenda back with all the numbers, the increases that he's set for.
We will sign the appropriate ordinance number to this tap fee increase. And we have motions and seconds to do this. Any more discussion?
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Brian, you okay with a little bit of break?
Yes, I'm fine. The next item on the agenda is the police department computer upgrades. You spoke to them at the work study, correct? We did talk about it.
And I will make a motion, Mr. Meredith, to allow the police department to do the estate computer upgrades.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second. I'm not certain you provided a quote at the work study at that time.
Actually, yeah, I think it's in the pack.
In the pack, we don't.
Yes, just so you have it. It ended up being a little bit less than what I thought, and that also, just to let
you know, that includes a computer that's needed for COGS. So it's four, four for the police department, and one is actually for COGS.
And I will say, I would approve this, but it's over this minimum that I'm allowed to approve without bringing to the council. We would, we already had done it, if it's something I could have approved. Quick question, how this is, how long will this last? What are the expectations that this upgrade will be?
He didn't get specifics on that, but Cameron may be able to actually address that better than I could, but generally speaking, you probably need to upgrade every five years or so. It just depends on what technology changes and stuff. Is that about...
Typically, stuff like this comes with a one-year warranty unless you, you know, buy, buy an extended warranty of some, some sort. And, yeah, I would say, you know, every three is probably too often, but typically, what we're used to is we go four and five. I will say that I'm familiar with doing it at a level, though, that we generally already have another one sitting there waiting to go to, and so that's a little different than it breaking and not being under warranty and then turn around needing to buy one. But, no, I think that every, every four to five is generally, because by the time that you've gotten to that time, either hard drives are better than they used to, but most of the time, whenever it's a spinning drive, if you got to that point, that, if nothing else was going to fail, that's everything was going to fail. So those have gotten better, but, yeah, that's...
And this is more hardware than software. It's not something that you'll decide that you need to purchase some sort of software and let it date.
Right, that's right. And one of the biggest things about this upgrade is, in the past, before I was here, we didn't really have an IT person, so if there was a computer needed, someone that worked at the police department would go to Best Buy and buy a computer. This is, we have an IT person we're working with that has recommended these, and he will hopefully be on board and helping us in the future, and that we'll have the things that we need for the police department for COGS, whereas the four, we kind of doubt what we could.
We have a motion and a second. We've had a discussion. Ms. Meredith, call the room, please.
Councilman Wilkerson.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the quote from Comtech about doing the repair to the weather warning siren. Ms. Kishan did verify that his quote that is provided is still a good quote through month of May, because there's some questions about it still being valid. And we talked about this, we talked about this a very long time, over a year ago. Anyway, I'll stop our day. Do you entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we pass the outdoor weather warning signal or approve this quote from Comtech.
I'll second that.
A motion and second to approve the quote to do this upgrade or repair.
$20,000? Has it been bid?
I have signal, please.
I think it needs to be bid.
I don't want to say it needs to be bid and then have to bid. We can certainly find out if this is the only version that does this, so we can do that.
You think this is a sole source on the air?
We have had other proposals, but they're like $150,000 proposals.
Cheaper than everybody at Weather Radio.
Yeah.
Lot cheaper.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, our recommendation from the attorney is to, to put this out to bid.
If you guys want to do it, if you want to repair it, put it out to bid. You won't put it out to bid if that's not what you want to do. I mean, there's no point making, everybody's got it. That's the decision I can ask to be made. What was the recommendation of M-PAS?
The, we did reach out to M-PAS about it, but we did speak with Ken Widener over a year ago, and there have been tons of discussions about should we do this or not. And we, I think we talked about it as a group, if it's still in place, it needs to be functioned and be repaired, and this... So...
I will make a motion to defer it to the work study.
We'll defer this to the work study and get more information.
It's not understanding that the system does work, it's just not worked automatically, it's got to be manually turned on.
But it's actually worse than that.
Of course, yeah. It picks up on low, low-flying planes and random radio signals and sets off false alarm and goes off on accident.
More reason to take it down. It's a tremendous liability.
We have a motion and a second for all the papers.
One second.
Next item on the agenda is the pay raises for the police department and to the police department office staff.
And I'll make that motion to give the police department and office staff a $3 an hour raise like we do with the public works, including Chief Jolly also.
I'll second.
I want to add to that, if I can, that this would be retroactive back to the person.
Just so everyone understands, Kishan had provided a short-form analysis of this proposal compared to the other proposal for the other employees, and it's approximately $40,000 that will be coming from the hospital insurance line, which is over budgeted, that, as everyone understands, that the budget amendment for this is not on the agenda tonight, because of, there is, the additional money will be coming from the fund balance.
I thought he supposed, if work study, it'd be easier if it all come from fund balance.
Well, her analysis pulls most of that money from the insurance fund that's over budgeted. I think it'll be about $40,000 that is not available on that line. So that's, but like I said, that, this request is not for the budget amendment. We can talk about the budget amendment when she prepares it, so everybody will be...
So we'll have a budget amendment prepared for the work study.
And this was one of the, one of the reasons that we didn't have that on the agenda, because of all the changes that we made even tonight, that we had to be both known at the beginning. We have a motion and a second to provide raises retroactive to the same date as public works. Any more discussion? Did you hear anything there about? Ms. Meredith, call the room, please.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the pay for firefighters for the East Tennessee assistance.
Make a motion, we approve paying firefighters for the East Tennessee assistance. Okay, I recommend, what was, what was, what we talked, $100 a person? A day?
Second.
A motion and second to pay $100 per day for the firefighters that attended the fires in East Tennessee. Ms. Meredith, call the room, please.
Councilman Wilkerson.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is approve the hiring of one additional full-time Public Works employee and one part-time Public Works employee. You have hired, we have hired the full-time person already, but the reason this is only included because the money for the full-time person is not budgeted, and that's the only reason we put it on the agenda. Because maybe rules say, you know, Aaron and I do those things because this one is over budgeted is the reason it's not on the agenda. So this will, again, be included in the upcoming budget amendment, approved debate. But understand, we've already hired this person. So we have not.
Do we need to vote on this?
Because it will require a budget amendment. I think it's necessary if you do.
So I'll make a motion that we approve hiring one additional full-time Public Works and one part-time Public Works employee, and that we'll have a budget amendment presented at the work study for us to review.
Yes.
Second.
A motion, a second. Ms. Meredith, call the role, please.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Lake.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item is ordinance 0422-0, wait, 042022-1, and it's the resounding on Old Highway 31E, and this is the first. And this, I'm sorry, again.
It's all good.
I'm still getting it.
So this is, this is, this is the first reading. There's not a public hearing necessary, and it's very straightforward. This is what the funding and going has occurred.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 042022-1.
Well, second.
A motion, second, to approve the resounding ordinance. Ms. Meredith, call the role, please.
And what property was it? Don't give us parcel number, everything is.
Property of 2002, Old Highway 31E, Westmore, Tennessee. Weeks of electric, I believe, and drug.
I see where exactly that says in the document. 2002, Old Highway 31E. Sometimes it is under.
Yeah.
Councilman Wilkerson, yes. Lake.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the resolutions for natural gas. We, the, we talked about this, the industrial development board has reached out and tried to do some studies, and I felt it was important that we were passing a resolution and we were doing requestable proposals to provide natural gas.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'd like to go.
Nowhere we're going tonight.
I'll entertain a motion for resolution R4222-1 in support of doing requestable proposals to provide natural gas in East Tennessee.
I make a motion to approve resolution 042022-1 in support of gathering information concerning natural gas lines in Westmore.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second.
Are we in discussion?
We are.
Just expression, we have to have a resolution just to gather information?
Uh, it was discussed by the developer and some people in the community that we, as a council, that we do a resolution to support this because natural gas and the resources to provide to us, the feasibility to provide it to us are, there's some expense involved in that, and we're taking it serious and that we're pursuing.
Thank you.
I'm there to argue. They're trying to move this forward faster than what it gets moved because he asked, he, he, he knows people how it plays the system, and he knows the guy that's associated with McDonald's, and he said, why is there not a McDonald's in Westmore? And he said, let me look my fleet last night, and he looked through the, and said, no gas.
That's the first perimeter that they look at, and businesses of that scope are all the same way.
I know for a fact, I know for a fact, and I can't reveal my sources, that there's an industry that's about 60 employees that's waiting to be built if gas gets in this town.
There's a lot of industries that would be willing to move once gas becomes available.
At the industrial development board, not the previous meeting or the month before, the city gals and public utilities come forward, and he spoke to the, for example, the, the cost associated by the developer for natural gas, with only one third of the cost sufficient to, for them to provide natural gas to us.
And the guy that I was talking to today is willing to push real hard to get this done, but he was afraid he might be, make his purpose defeat us, and some of our leaders, including us, and I told him, I said, if you can get this done faster, we'll smooth it when it's over.
That's right. I think it's, I don't think it's a problem.
Call the question.
Yes.
Councilman Wilkerson, yes.
Yes.
Lake.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Your turn.